I had the airport this morning.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
That's right, that's like seven, ain't it?
Yeah. I told them I'd do a resolution supporting the tower. Hope that's okay.
Could someone else try talking so if we can see if we can hear them?
Yeah, so if we don't do resolutions.
Mary, would you be able to talk?
Well, that impacts us. It impacts Kevin.
I feel like I vaguely heard something.
Yeah, that's what you're saying, yeah.
So I figured that.
For letter support.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a resolution, it's a letter support.
Yeah, letter support, yeah. I don't know how they do that count for the, for the, the most, the busiest airport. Second busiest in the state, but is it the touch and goals?
Yeah, touching goals.
The touch and goals, so that's, it's not the busiest.
No.
But it's got the most touch and goals.
Yeah.
Because I, I was out there the one day because my mom's cousin would come around and we fly. And I, I sat there, we sat there, we were here doing this pre-check stuff, and I bet there was probably twenty-five planes just came in, they touched, and within like ten minutes of this pre-check. I'm like, what's going on? Well, they're doing their touch and goals.
Your students, yeah.
And it's like, well, yeah, twenty-five of them in forty-five minutes, yeah, he'd get a lot of.
Stein, can you try talking now?
Whatever it takes.
Oh, yeah, because he, he had.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting for March 23rd, 2021. Our first order of business is please stand and join me for the pledge to the play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Bob, agenda review. Do we have anything to add?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I'll move approval of the agenda.
Second.
I got a first and a second for the agenda review approval. Any discussion? Stephanie, will you do roll call?
Commissioner Pap?
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo?
Aye.
Commissioner Landhammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Strunberg?
Aye.
Chair Brunder?
Aye. Motion carries.
Our first item on the agenda is the DNR land acquisition. We have Stein with us from Wildlife Manager. Good morning.
Good morning. One more check. Everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for having me this morning to discuss this acquisition of forty-six acres of property down in South Goodundere. We're asking for a resolution of approval, and I believe I sent a draft copy of what we use or have used in the past for that. So I just, you open to answer any questions you might have in regards to that resolution.
Yeah, we do have the resolution. I got a question from Commissioner Landhammer here in the boardroom.
Just a question. I'm assuming this will either slow down or not impact the sediment going into the river.
Yeah, it's a unique piece of property being so close to the river like that. This is mostly up on the top, and I think we can safely say that once we have it seeded down to diverse prairie mix, we'll have a really good root system in place, and we should be able to decrease erosion quite a bit. In fact, that entire property that it joins is now in permanent cover all the way down to the river. So we're in very good shape there. That's a unique part, you know, it's a unique opportunity for us because it's directly adjacent to a piece of property we already own, and so it allows us to make that long contiguous prairie grassland.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Motion approval?
No. Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second. Any other discussion or questions or comments? Looks like it's pretty straightforward for us today, so we'll get you in and out of here pretty quick. I don't have any questions. It looks like, it looks like, yeah, it looks like a good project, so I think it's, should certainly help us out.
I would invite the commissioners to feel free to contact us in the Nicklitt Wildlife Office if any questions should arise regarding this or any other project we have ongoing.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, if there's no other discussions, Stephanie, will you do the roll call for the resolution for the DNR?
Commissioner Pap?
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo?
Aye.
Commissioner Landhammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Strunberg?
Aye.
Chair Brunder?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you for your time this morning. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, we will move on to some drainage items. Have several drainage items to take care of this morning. Our first thing we have to deal with is our County Ditch Fifty Public Hearing. I would like to welcome everyone to County Ditch Fifty Hearing for the repair petition. Since most of the attendees are attending virtually, I would ask anyone that would, is going to speak to introduce themselves before speaking, and please mute your phones until you are ready to speak. We will now have Ryan Hinecker from the Blue Earth County Drainage go over the jurisdictional documents for the hearing. Morning, Ryan.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Again, I'm Ryan Hinecker with Blue Earth County Drainage Management. Few jurisdictional documents for today. Hearing notices were mailed to landowners on March 5th of 2021, and hearing notices for publishing the Mancito Free Press also on March 12th of 2021. The purpose of today's hearing is for the repair for portions of County Ditch Fifty. The system received a petition for repair by Mr. Gordy Kuznia. The need for this repair is in the best interest of the County Ditch Drainage System. Infield inspections and televising, also working with the engineer ISG, further discovered additional issues, so the need for repair is imminent. Petitioner and the property environmental resources are seeking approval for today's repair petition.
Thank you, Ryan. We will now hear from the engineering staff from ISG. Chuck Brandl, thank you.
Good morning.
Morning, Chuck.
Good morning, Chuck.
I'm going to share the brief of the report. You guys see our presentation?
Yes.
Yep.
All right. So again, we're here to talk about County Ditch Fifty Branch Thirteen. Just a little bit of a presentation overview. Like Ryan said, the purpose of the meeting, there was a petition for repair. There was an investigation on the repair, both televising and field investigation. And then there was a landowner meeting, informational meeting in January to go over options. And from that meeting, we have a preferred option that we are going to go over today. So after that meeting, we updated our report and submitted a repair report. The watershed primarily lies in Lincoln and Butternut Valley Township. About forty-eight hundred acres of fifty feet of fall throughout the watershed. The system was originally constructed in 1917. There have been some repairs to the system throughout its history. There was an improvement, Branch Twelve in 1971. And then the latest repair that ISG worked on was back in 2015, where we cleaned the mainline ditch, and then we replaced about ten thousand feet of tile, including a oar in under Trump Highway 60. So this is how we ran with ISG. Here's just a map of the overall watershed. You can see the black lines are tiled, blue line is the old ditch that we cleaned back in 2015. And the Branch Thirteen and lateral P system is another subpart of the system, rather than the first of that. Just to add, the part of the repair that we done in 2015 included the mainline that Branch Thirteen drained into. So this next map is a photograph of Branch Thirteen and lateral P system. You can see generally running north of the mainline tile. And then the black lines, once again, are existing tiles. Branch Thirteen is a combination of eighteen, sixteen, and twelve, ten inch tile. Lateral P is a ten inch tile. So here are existing drainage coefficients. And when we talk about drainage coefficients, it's the amount of water drained per day in twenty-four hours span. So similarly, what we see is a point two six to a point five four drainage coefficient on these existing systems. And for a repair, we have to match those as closely as possible. So we did televise the system, Ryan did touch on that. System is a hundred and three years old. Here's a picture of where we did televise it last fall. And currently, we do have around two and a half feet of cover. This was surveyed by our land surveyors and actually infield inspections as well. The original tile had more cover than what it does now. So there is proof that some of the soil has subsided, or what we call subsided. That does allow, in the repair statute, for the system to be lowered as long as you match your original capacity. And here is a wide heart map that just shows the tile going through a low area, and that's what that subsided to do. This is a dish covered, keep it safe. So right now, the tile is blowing out in damage because there's, there's not enough cover in this area. So the proposal is to gain some depth by flattening the tile to gain depth in this area. So we developed multiple options. We did have a landowner meeting talking about options to repair, improve, and reroute after feedback, and from our recommendations, we did go through four, fifteen reroute offers. And here, going into more of it, this would be replacing around two thousand feet of eighteen inch tile, four hundred feet sixteen inch tile, eleven hundred feet of ten inch tile, fourteen hundred feet of ten inch tile. And we are keeping the same drainage coefficients since it is a repair. At the landowner meeting, the repair was called Option Two, so that's why we left Option Two on there. So the landowners know where we were moving ahead of the Option Two that was presented, that moved back to the end. So here's a map of the proposed system. The proposed tile is in green. And we are staying generally west of the existing tile for Branch Thirteen, and mostly north for lateral P tile. And this is just moving the system to have more cover, have it have that subsided, so we can have at least four feet of cover. The lowest area is right in here, so we're going around that to make sure we have added recover for the tile. And here's a profile that we put together showing that we are being around two and a half feet of cover by moving that tile to make sure we don't have any damages to field operations. Yeah, the dashed black line is existing tile, the green line is the full tile. We're able to use a slightly flatter slope. And instead of a ten inch, twelve inch tile through this area, it'll match the capacity and gain annuity. So it can still qualify as a repair. For tile installation, we typically use HDPE or dual, what people refer to as dual wall pipe. We use what's called an insertity for all of the connections, and we make sure everything's connected. We do require granular rock above the top of the pipe. We prefer the pipe which was called spooned in with a round bottom trench. We also add intakes at property lines in low points and at road crossings, so those are included in the proposed repair. We also include damaged areas. We did show this video to landowners, so they had an idea of what construction would look like. This is a forty-two inch tile. Our disturbance area could not be as large as this, this area. This was Blue Earth J D nine back a couple of years ago. But using all of that information, we put together a repair cost estimate. There are some road authority costs for crossing the township road. But the total cost to landowners is estimated at two hundred eighty-five thousand, just over two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. We did factor in a hundred foot wide temporary damages throughout the alignment for construction. We're proposing to abandon the existing tiles. And with that, we are recommending approval of the repair. And if it is approved, ordering plans and specifications and construction. We anticipate that if this is approved, at this time, you could continue with construction and get construction done in 2021. That's a summary of our report.
Thank you.
Any questions of myself or Kyle?
Nope. Thank you, Chuck and Kyle, for that report. Any questions from the board at this time for Chuck or Kyle from ISG?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay, hearing none from the board at this time. I'm going to open up the public hearing for comment. This hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less, and make sure your phone is unmuted. So anyone wishing to comment or have any questions on the County Ditch Fifty repair?
Mr. Chair, I might just also indicate to any public, we have had a little technical difficulty here. If they're not able to get in and they want to use the chat function, that would be another way to comment. But we're not quite sure if everybody is able to be heard on this end if they're trying to speak, so.
Thank you, Bob, for that clarification. Appreciate it. Anyone out there wishing to comment on County Ditch Fifty for the repair? Is that a message popping up? I can't read it from here. Okay.
One, one chat said I can hear you. Apparently you can't hear me, so.
Yes, Mary can hear us, but she can't hear her.
Okay.
I've had a side conversation with her, and she's going to message me if she has comments.
Okay. Is there anyone out there that would like to comment on County Ditch Fifty repairs? Is there anyone out there that would be willing just to state their name so we know that we can hear somebody? I see Gordy's up there. I, if I could just get someone to see if we can hear anybody?
This is John Erickson, James Dyke, I'm with Yuland Brothers.
Perfect, we can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I seen Gordy.
Gordy, can you hear me?
Thank you, Gordy. You can hear us fine. We can hear you, so thank you. All right, well, if there's, I'll just ask one more time then. If there's anybody that has any comments on the County Ditch Fifty repair, please state your name and address for the record. Otherwise, we'll bring it back to the county board for approval. Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the county board.
I would move we accept the findings and orders, such?
I would second that motion.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to accept the orders and the findings for County Ditch Fifty repair. Any other questions or comments from the county board? Hearing none. Stephanie, will you do roll call for me?
Commissioner Pap?
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo?
Aye.
Commissioner Landhammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Strunberg?
Aye.
Chair Brunder?
Aye. The motion carries.
All right, at this time, we also have in our packets a resolution for finance. Would I have a motion to accept the financing? Oh, you wanted to present it to us there quick, Ryan?
Sorry.
It is in our packet, but probably for a public.
Yep, my apologies, you're right.
Yeah, we should probably get it on the record.
You are right. Yep, so the resolution to finance is just kind of a boilerplate thing. In case that we did want to include this project as part of bombing.
Yep.
It's a step that we need to take.
Perfect. To have a motion to accept.
Move to approve.
Got a first from Vance.
Second.
Second from Peepo. Any discussion? Hearing none. Stephanie, will you do roll call?
Commissioner Pap?
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo?
Aye.
Commissioner Landhammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Strunberg?
Aye.
Chair Brunder?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Ryan, and Chuck and Kyle for your reports, and everybody that was listening in on the hearing. We will close this hearing at this point and move forward with the project. Thank you, everyone.
Can you now move on to County Ditch Forty-eight? Hello, morning, Craig.
Okay, as far as jurisdictional documents, hearing notices mailed to landowners on March 5th, 2021, as required by statute. The Blue Earth County Ditch Forty-eight is in the southeast portion of Cambria Township, with a small portion in Butternut Valley Township. An improvement petition was received in 2016. The improvement project was approved, and after advertising for bids, was let to Gustafson Drainage LLC. The project is complete. The engineer filed a final acceptance report on February 8th, 2021. Today's hearing, the purpose of the, of an acceptance hearing is to determine if the contractor has completed the work in accordance with the plans and specifications. When a drainage authority accepts a contract, it will order the payment of the remaining balance due on the contract. The acceptance also starts the three-year warranty period for tile work and one-year warranty period for the open ditch work. That's it for jurisdictional documents.
Thank you, Craig. And as Craig mentioned already, this hearing is today to accept the work from Gustafson Drainage LLC in Lake Crystal for the improvements on CD Forty-eight. Now we will hear from Chuck Brandl from ISG.
Good morning again.
Morning, Chuck.
Sure.
I've got a short presentation on CD Forty-eight. Just going over the watershed here quickly. It's just over eleven hundred acres. The red line was the original boundary during the redetermination of benefits. The purple line is what the viewers came up with for the benefited area. Zooming in, the improvement is shown in green. The black lines again represent the existing tile that was replaced. All the green line were replaced. The system was, replaced the twenty-four inch outlet with a thirty-six inch outlet, crossed Highway 68 with a twenty-four inch tile, and then split. There was Branch Two with an eighteen inch tile, portion of the mainline was a twenty-four, and then portions of Branch One were also approved. So most of the system was improved as part of the improvement. The contract with Gustafson Drainage, the original contract was seven hundred, just over seven hundred thirty-one thousand, a fifteen hundred dollar change order. We did estimate that we would need some granular foundation on the project, but we didn't use hardly any. So that saved about twenty-three thousand dollars along with a few other items. So the total final amount for approval that we're recommending for approval is seven hundred ten thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-five cents. We currently are holding ninety-three thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. So we're recommending payment of that amount. The original estimates for construction was eight hundred twenty-nine thousand. So the project came in under budget and was constructed under budget. So that standpoint, we're sitting pretty good. As part of the project, we're abandoning the, most of the existing system, which is shown in the painted purple color on the screen and part of the report. During construction, performing construction observation, there were a couple of oarings under Highway 68. Just some of the pictures of construction separating out clay and pathos oil. Areas that were graded and then cultivated over the top, ripped over the top. Just some of the connections that we'll put in, the intakes. At the outlet of the system, because it does drain into a designated travel stream, we used a riprap berm to slow down the flow and do some temporary storage within the ravine area. And that area is shaded, so with the travel stream, you don't want to increase the temperature of the water. So we had looked at a pond in this area, but it, because of that travel stream, that makes you move with a riprap berm in the ravine that slowed down the flow and does some temporary storage. The system was televised after it was constructed. There were a few things that needed to be repaired, and those were done. This is just some pictures of the inside of the tile. These top two pictures are connections, although we inserted these, just to show you what that looks like. We did televise the whole system, and there were a few things that were repaired. The contractor has signed the final pay request, submitted all the appropriate documentation. Along with the project, we did document damages for the landowners. And they're shown in different colors on the maps here by year. With yellow being corn, blue being beans, and then the red areas were constructed when there were no crops on the field. We did put all of those damages together and submitted a damage report. There was about twenty-one acres of damages in 2018 and about forty-eight acres of damages in 2019. With that, all the work has been completed. We recommend approval and acceptance of the project and final payment to Gustafson Drainage. Any questions for myself?
Thank you, Chuck. Any questions from any members of the board at this time for Chuck? Okay, Chuck, I don't have anybody in here that has any questions this time, so we will open up this hearing for public comment. This hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address for the record. And if you are pleased, limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone out there wishing to comment on the final acceptance to LLC for Lake Crystal, Gustafson Drainage? Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch Forty-eight for the final payment? One last time, anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch Forty-eight for Gustafson Drainage for LLC Lake Crystal for ninety-three thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars? Seeing no public comment, I will bring it back to the county board and ask for motion.
I would move we adopt and confirm the findings and accept the completed project.
Thank you, Kevin. Do I have a second?
Landhammer seconds.
Thank you, clean. Any discussion from the board? Good project. I think, it sounds like staff had a few questions this morning, but they must have fielded them because we didn't get any public comment, and I'm sure they'll be fielding more questions as the day goes on, so. If there's no questions from the board, Stephanie, will you do the roll call?
Commissioner Pap?
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Landcammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye, motion carries for county ditch forty-eight final payment. Thank you everybody. That will conclude, that will conclude our county ditch forty-eight public hearing. Thank you everybody for your time, thank you Chuck for your reports, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, and we got a couple other county ditches to set some hearings for, why won't we?
Okay.
County ditch fifty-two, we're setting a hearing date.
Yes, county ditch fifty-two is located in the south-central portion of Sterling Township, Blue Earth County. This watershed is approximately one thousand two hundred acres. We received a petition for improvement on August seventeenth, 2020. The Blue Earth County Drainage Authority appointed Charles J. Brandl, engineer, to make a preliminary survey on September eighth, 2020. Mr. Brandl submitted the preliminary survey report to the property and environmental resources department on February tenth, 2021. Uh, action requested that the drainage authority hereby set a date for a hearing for the engineer's preliminary survey report on the improvement of county ditch fifty-two for April thirteenth, 2021. Draft of the findings and orders is, was attached.
Alright, a motion to accept the hearing date for April thirteenth.
So moved.
Mark, thank you, do you have a second?
Second.
Kevin, any discussion? Hearing none, Stephanie, will you do roll call?
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Pevo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landcammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye, motion carries for the hearing for April thirteenth, county ditch fifty-two. County ditch twenty-eight.
Hi, uh, we have another, uh, setting the hearing date for county ditch twenty-eight. It's located in the sections fifteen through thirty-one, the southern portion of Lincoln Township in Blue Earth County. Its watershed is approximately three thousand nine hundred acres. We received a petition to outlet lands into CD twenty-eight on January thirteenth, 2021. On February second, 2021, the drainage authority appointed Ron Rinquist to prepare a recommendation report for the outlet fee and benefits on the petitioned land. Action requested that the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority hereby grant a request to set a hearing date on the petition to outlet land for April thirteenth, 2021. Again, the draft of the findings and orders is in your board packet.
Okay, do I have a motion to set a date for April thirteenth for county ditch twenty-eight?
Pap moves.
Landcammer seconds.
First from Kevin and second from Clean, any discussion? Stephanie, we call a roll.
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Pevo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landcammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye, motion carries for the public hearing on county ditch twenty-eighth for the thirteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you, we got ditch seventy-seven, Ryan's back on.
Uh, county ditch seventy-seven is just the repair. Uh, this repair is at a cost estimate of fifteen to twenty thousand. That is not a estimate from a contractor, that's just numbers that I've used from the last recent months that we've got numbers in. A similar situation to what's going on in CD fifty. It's an area of peat bottoms where you need to relocate that tile, it's been getting damaged from agricultural practices. So, it's extent to that repair.
Okay, do I have a motion to do the repairs on ditch seventy-seven?
Staff seconds.
Got a first from Vance and a second from Kevin, any discussion? Stephanie, will you do the roll?
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Pevo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landcammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye, motion carries for the repairs on ditch seventy-seven.
Thank you.
Thank you drainage staff, morning.
Mr. Chair, could I ask Chuck, no, Chuck can answer a question before he leaves.
Sure, Chuck, we got a question for you, you still on? Thank you.
And I was on, I was on a call earlier this morning and they said they're seeing huge increases in steel, wood, and, um, plastic. Are you seeing that as you look at these ditch repairs?
Yes, we are, and I've talked to a couple of the manufacturers, and, um, from what I've, at least what they've told me, that plastic pipe, the material costs are up twenty to twenty-five percent. It's due to, um, shortage of resin, so, we are seeing slightly higher prices this year. Um, so we are adjusting costs accordingly, uh, because of the rise in material costs. Uh, we did see in twenty, at least in 2020, that labor cost did stay fairly steady. Um, so we didn't see a huge increase in 2020, but we'll see how bids come in in 2021, but our couple bids that we've gotten, our, um, the average, average costs are slightly higher than our costs. So we are seeing that.
Thanks, I, I, I'm hearing that across the board, I was just kind of curious if you had seen it too, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Chuck. Alright, at this time, we'll move on to planning and zoning.
Morning George.
Morning George.
Yep.
Morning George.
I'm ready George, whenever you're ready.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. PC zero six dash twenty-one is a request from Stephen Roberts and Daniel Roberts. It is a request for review and approval of a conditional use permit to expand an existing feedlot by constructing one swine finishing barn. If approved, the applicant will construct a fishing, finishing barn capable of housing twelve hundred head of pigs between fifty-five and three hundred pounds or three hundred and sixty annameters, and will feature a below barn concrete liquid manure storage area. The facility will have a total capacity of thirty-six hundred pigs, between that weight range of fifty-five and three hundred pounds, for a total of one thousand and eighty annameters. The applicant has also applied for a feedlot permit with the MPCA. The property is own agricultural and is in the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter of section twenty-nine Butternut Va- Butternut Valley Township. Staff presented the report, that who was present and had no additional comment. One individual expressed concern with the proposal. She referenced another pig facility located one and one-half miles from her residence. She said order from that facility and the associated manure application have created health issues for her and her husband. During the discussion, it was just determined that the proposed facility is approximately seven miles from the home in question. Members of the planning commission concurred that the proposal meets the standards of the ordinance. Following the discussion, the planning commission forwarded a recommendation of approval of the request based on the findings prepared by staff and the conditions proposed, and the board action is resolution.
Thank you George for that report. At this time, this is a public hearing, I would like to, uh, open it up to public comment for anybody who would like to testify on zero six twenty-one, the Roberts expansion. And is the, is the applicant on the line at this time? And do you have anything to add? Okay, hearing nothing. I will call for anyone that has to, wants to testify on zero six twenty-one for planning and zoning. Anyone wishing to comment on zero six twenty-one, the Roberts expansion for the hog operation? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I will bring the action back to the board. Questions or comments, or for a motion?
I would move to approve.
Got a motion from Kevin to approve?
Pevo was second.
Second from Mark, any other discussion? Good report George, thank you. Stephanie, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Pevo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landcammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye, motion carries.
PC zero seven dash twenty-one is a request from Blue Earth County. It's a request for review and approval of an ordinance amendment to chapter twenty-four, which is zoning divisions two and three, and is to add activities of removing, filling, or stockpiling over five hundred cubic yards of fill where associated with township, county, state, or federal road project as permitted use in agricultural and conservation zone districts. Staff presented the report. A representative of a contractor that serves southern Minnesota addressed the planning commission. He referenced a large highway repair project awarded to his company on February second by Mendot. He stated that it is common to have a narrow timeframe for completion. Members of the planning commission concurred with the proposed amendment will be of benefit to the highway department and other road authorities. Following the discussion, the planning commission forwarded a recommendation of approval of the proposed amendment based on the findings prepared by staff. And the board action is the adoption of the ordinance amendment.
Thank you George. At this time, if there's anyone wishing to comment on zero seven twenty-one, uh, re, ha, with hauling in fill for road authorities, please state your name and address for the record.
This is John Erickson with Yule Brothers, uh, Overley, Minnesota.
Morning John.
We're, we, thank you for having us, and thank you for putting this on the agenda. We are supportive of this change in, uh, the ordinance requirement. We feel that, especially with the tight timeframes with some of these larger contracts, that there are certain risks involved, and those risks usually turn into increases in costs in the project. So, if those risks can be avoided with this process, I think it will be beneficial from a taxpayer standpoint and take some of that risk away. And a lot of these are very clear-cut that it's an acceptable process and they still have the approval process to make in it, so nothing will change except taking the risk away or the cost of the taxpayers, so we are supportive of this request.
Thank you for those comments, appreciate that. Anyone else that would like to comment on zero seven twenty-one? Last time for anyone wishing to comment on zero seven twenty-one? Hearing no public comment from, I would bring the motion back to the board.
So moved, yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Got a first and a second, discussion? This is a policy that I think does need to be changed, because when we have a washout or something on a road, a township road, Mark and I have both been involved in conversations about these projects, and staff's hands are tied because they have to go through this whole entire process, so, uh, it will still go through the process with the staff, it just won't go through the planning and zoning board, and I'm confident that they will make sure they do a good job, and there's other, other checkmates in place in order for other, other things they have to deal with before they do it, so, this will just expedite it and get some of these projects done after a washout. Okay, if there's no other comments, Stephanie, you call the roll please.
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Pevo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landcammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye, motion carries.
And just one other item, Mr. Chairman, and that is that the staff at the planning commission meeting presented a request to, to the planning commission for the possibility of reopening the solar ordinance. And what you may recall is that all of these zoning districts have setbacks to these large solar projects where the solar, large solar projects are allowed. And so the question was, is that, is it possible that those setbacks maybe should be more, um, for the agricultural and conservation districts? And if you look at the business and industrial districts, should those setbacks be reduced a little bit or reviewed anyway? And so the planning commission was open to that, that suggestion, and so, um, staff is to, um, what, they're okay with us moving forward with some amendments or working on some amendments to that ordinance, and there's no action required by the board at this time, but just an FYI to the board.
Yeah, it's my recollection that you were going to just do some other, checking around to see what some other counties are doing, and look at the setbacks on the different uses.
I think that's a really good idea, I, I do.
Okay, other comments for George? Okay, thank you George.
Thank you. Thanks George.
Thanks George.
Alright, this time we'll move on to human services.
As long as we're waiting for him.
Thank you.
Is this like a TV dialogue?
Yeah. Commercial.
Commercial, yeah. Maybe we could get some extra revenues by selling commercials.
Yeah. Good morning Kelly.
Good morning.
Morning Phil.
Morning Phil.
Morning.
Morning Phil.
Good morning everybody, it's good to see you.
Good to see you.
Yeah. Uh, thank you for hearing us today. I, uh, have a few action items, I think my, my stuff is pretty straightforward today, all things considered, and then Kelly's here as well and give us, uh, an update on how things are going with our clinics and with COVID response. Uh, Mr. Chair, I have, I think, three action items for your attention today, and, uh, the first of those being supporting housing, and that's our comprehensive housing contract, this one is unique, just because there's no money attached to it, really gives us permission to engage our housing participants, and it's an agreement, um, that with, between us and Hearth Connections. There's no specified dollar amount, it is a renewal agreement. The term to keep doing what we've been doing is January first of twenty-one through December thirty-first of twenty-one. Um, I do just draw attention to the chair and rest of commissioners that there's more and more of this electronic contracting, and so in this case, the board obviously has the authority to approve a contract like this, but, um, it does, there's a liaison role that Andrew, our supervisor, would play after there's an agreement, so that, um, his name is on that as it goes forward after it's signed and ratified. Second item is financial assistance, um, the South Sudanese community of Minnesota, and this is for interpreting services for clients with limited English proficiency. Um, it fulfills one of our mandate, mandated responsibilities to the community. The rates are the same as for other contracts in this exact area for interpreting. Face-to-face, um, fifty dollars per hour for the first hour, thirty-eight dollars for additional hours, and then a dollar and forty cents per minute for phone interpretation. The term April first of twenty-one through December thirty-first of twenty-one. And finally, um, the human services fee policy and procedure manual, we bring this, um, to you each year. There is a cover sheet that I'll kind of walk through just real quickly, but then I know in talking with Bob too, we decided to include the whole fee policy, just because sometimes there's straightforward questions like, how much do we charge for this or that? It's a big document, but, um, it's, um, something we just wanted the board to have a look at. So, this, um, changes here, um, would be about the federal poverty guidelines, so we change those every year, and then we've done some slight edits, which I'll kind of walk through quickly here, um, in a second. Um, the effective date would be March first. If you look in your packet, there is an attachment, and, um, just if you kind of look at the flavor of some of the changes for fee policy this year, um, page one, the introduction, section of page two, was just language and grammar. Um, then page three, there were some roles that we, when we shift how our workflow goes, those are contained, so we made some edits there. Page five was a sliding fee, um, and that, of course, uh, for any of you that don't know, we do apply that based on income, and so there is a sliding fee that gets applied, and this one, we actually included out-of-state Medicaid plans as well. So that was in addition to our policy. Um, page six is about public health rates, and page seven, mental health center rates. Um, there's categories about the different roles that we have within the mental health center that's in, contained in that, about consultation services, when we consult either with outside entities or for, you know, let's say the courts, that there's a, a fee for that, and also specifically court testimony. And then, towards the end, um, out-of-home placements, there were some slight changes, um, to form, but not content. So formatting was changed, the content remained similar. Page fifteen, remove the chemical dependency rule twenty-five language. Um, that was contracted out when we started the Yellow Line project. We took our person that was doing that and put her, Jessie, who's in the jail now, um, into, um, that project, and so we contracted out all of our rule twenty-fives to area providers, and so that's still our practice, so we aren't doing the rule twenty-fives, and we haven't done that for several years. There are, um, I've mentioned to you, we're, I don't know if we're even halfway through, um, chemical dependency reform, but there is a lot of changes that are being proposed and implemented over time in chemical health, and one of those being, um, choice of providers to do the assessment. So it fits really nicely with our change, we just happened to change it because of circumstance, but now they're basically saying access. access can be anyone, you want to do your assessment can do it. That's coming. It's still a year out, but right now they have a choice. They can do that or they can go to the county. But eventually, it'll be just the broad open, go to whoever you want to. And counties can still be one of those providers, but it's going to shift significantly.
So, Mr. Chair, I got picked up and I needed an assessment. I could pick anybody?
Correct. And I think that's even true now, but it will become the way of the world for Minnesota in a year.
That's interesting.
Yeah, it is.
Can I go back a couple? You've got 25 cents a page, et cetera. Well, what about electronic?
Yeah, if we can, if we can do that, we certainly will do that. Sometimes it is a requirement to have, and that's still the archaic vaccine, it still exists, that sometimes they need something that isn't just an email. Excuse me. So it depends on the platform, the security of the platform. And if they make a copy off of that, does it count as a bona fide record? So it depends on if it's court, a lawyer asking, or if it's just somebody asking. We could certainly get a release and send them an email.
I was just curious. And under the daycare, M is 20, you can have up to 25 absent days. With COVID, was that relaxed?
Yeah. Boy, excuse me. Yeah, you'll see, I have data today about our financial assistance programs, and it's really hard. I think our data has become skewed, and so it has been relaxed. And some of that passively relaxed, meaning we're not taking a hard line to people in general. And then some of it, of course, was more official, and you were part of that with Blue Ribbon and other things of trying to say, how do we proceed into the future? So I know my simple answer to your question is yes, it's been relaxed, but there's kind of two dimensions to that.
Or 18.
Yes, exactly right, or 18. That's even more accurate.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
And Mr. Chair, I think my only other note there was page 17, remove language for non-public assistance. There was just some old language that hasn't been used since 2016. So those were the notes that we wanted to provide to the board. But yeah, some of these other pieces within the fee policy, certainly, we wanted to provide those to the boards, for the board's knowledge as well.
Thank you, Phil. Any questions on the three action items for Phil?
On move approval?
Second.
First one clean, second one marked. Any discussion? Hearing none. Stephanie, would you roll call, please?
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landcammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye. Motion carries for the action items. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I have some discussion information items, some slides to just go over with the board and see if there's any further discussion or questions you have for me. The first of those, first several ones are all dealing with financial assistance, and the very last slide is with our fraud prevention program. The first slide is cash programs, and you'll see trends going up in general, but not a remarkable level of increase. So that's for our cash programs. I think it's going to be increasingly difficult for us to interpret that in real time, but I think looking back, we'll be able to see the effects of COVID. But right now, as it starts to roll forward, as COVID rolled forward, this one goes, you know, starts in 2020, and I think we'll see a lot of changes as we, as we go forward. The next one was with SNAP, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. And you'll see an increase of caseload from 19 to 2020 of 64 cases. Again, I think we're going to see some significant changes in the SNAP program as we go into, you know, data for this year. Healthcare programs, also a significant increase, almost 700 cases from 2019 to 2020. And then again, what will happen now is cases cannot be closed to the commissioner's question previous, is that it's going to create a big skew, a blip up. Some of that will be real need, and some of that will be policy that we are not able to close out cases, and we're sitting on cases, which is starting to change already. There are some SNAP changes that are coming where come June, they're going to start renewing cases again. So that's all been put on hold, but now we're gearing up for that. And I think the financial workers are very concerned because that's going to be in addition to everything else that's kind of stacked up, is trying to sort through some of that backlog. And then the final slide for financial assistance is just the cases combined, and you'll see a total of 780 cases increased overall. So that's a combined of food and cash and healthcare. The final slide is something that we've certainly looked at together in the past, and that's our Fraud Prevention Investigation Report and our work that Ginger Peterson does for us. Our numbers are still very solid. If you look under the investigation section, the cost-to-benefit ratio for a dollar invested, how much is returned on that investment? And you'll see the state average is at $7, and the required return on investment is $3, and ours was at 938, which is a really strong number, but it has been even higher. You'll see the fiscal year here did go into 2020, so I think it has been skewed already, and we'll see what next year, next fiscal year looks like. Average days to complete a case is one day for us, and we have to, our standard is 15 days to process a case. So I think Ginger and the way we were set up, we're quite efficient. Average cases per month is 20. The goal there, we're a little short of, 25 to 30 is what they're looking for. I do think COVID probably skewed that downward. The cost savings for this fiscal year, $450,000, including overpayments, a credit, and some, some effect from criminal cases. The total number then month, I mean, for annualized is 238 cases referred to fraud. So this has been a real strength of ours. I will say that I know Ginger's involved in training other folks. People are looking at this model of using law enforcement or somebody with a law enforcement background to do this work. I think it adds a lot of credibility to what we're doing, and our outcomes have been improved since we've done that. That's all I have for today.
Thank you, Phil. Any questions for Phil?
No.
Good report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report the other day at the work session, too. It was very informative.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good morning, Kelly.
Good morning.
Hi.
I'm back.
Yes.
We love having you here.
Good to see you.
I love being here. Thanks for having me this morning. So our, our update is still all about vaccination, which is just absolutely fantastic to stand here and talk about. So we continue to work alongside all of our partners in the county, and that includes our federal pharmacies, our state pharmacies, our federally qualified health clinic of Open Door, Mankato Clinic, Mayo Clinic, and of course, now the new state site through the State Emergency Operations Center that has their first clinic today, actually. So bringing more vaccine into the area and more opportunities for folks to get vaccinated, which is exciting.
Yeah.
As of this morning, 25.7% or 17,000, just over 17,000 Blue Earth County residents have received their first vaccination, and 10,645 have completed the series. So we're making progress. As a county, we continue to meet the goal of getting the vaccine out in the 72-hour window after we receive it. So this is how this kind of works on Monday mornings. By 8:30, we submit our vaccine dose request. We, on Friday, we receive confirmation of the number that we're going to get. Then typically, our vaccine arrives on Tuesday, and then we have a clinic either Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday of the week to meet that 72-hour window, in addition to having second-dose clinics most weeks as well, other than when the snowstorm kind of impacted our schedule or our cadence. We, moving forward, starting next week, we actually have a base allocation of 300 doses each week, so we know we will receive 300. Anything above that, that we ask for, is the same process that I just explained. We have to wait until Friday typically to know what we're going to receive. So then Mondays, Friday afternoons and Mondays are busy working to get all of our Blue Earth County priority groups into those clinics and fill them as much as possible. And then at a certain point, we work with Jessie Anderson as our PIO to get that link out to public. She monitors the clinics along with us to know if we should publish that on our social media. And our link went out this morning, a day later than last week. So we were able to work with more, that expanded priority group that included our grocery and food service and manufacturing to fill those clinics and get vaccinations rolling. Any questions on that? That was a lot of timing.
That's a lot of stuff, yeah.
Yeah. So there's, there's a lot of work, of course, that goes into making the first-dose clinics and those second-dose clinics happen each week and go smoothly. But clinic days are really awesome days, just some great stories coming out of it. People are excited, people are in tears, people who haven't seen their family in a year. So that's really some, some amazing stories. Last week at our clinic, we had a young man who brought his guitar and actually played during his 15-minute wait period. So that was just super exciting. And we're looking at hopefully being able to provide or do some more of that at our clinics as well. So that is my update. Next month, I plan to bring more pictures. This month, I didn't quite have time, but we have some fantastic pictures that kind of show all of this detail and all of this work.
Mr. Chair, is everybody showing up? Or are you finding some people just aren't coming when they've made an appointment?
Some are not coming when they've made the appointment. Some call us. They're either ill or had a conflict come up or found another vaccine in the meantime. But we monitor that throughout the clinics and continue to reach out to groups. So if tomorrow's clinic, we see there's a fairly high no-show rate, then we call those folks, try and get ahold of them. If we can't get ahold of them at a certain point, we know they're probably not coming, and we start reaching out to other groups so that we can still meet that 90% vaccine being out the door in 72 hours.
Do you have any idea what the impact of the clinic downtown will have on everything else?
Not yet. So they have been great to work with already. We've, they've attended a planning meeting, and we've had phone calls, so we're monitoring that very closely, us and our partners, what impact that, that will have.
We don't know how many vaccines they're supposed to be getting.
I'm hearing 1,000. And they're starting with the connectors, that state tool. They're, I believe, looking within a 50-mile radius of the Mankato area, messaging people that there are, there's a vaccine opportunity. So that will help. I believe there was like 47,000 or just over 47,000 on the list within 50 miles. They know that there's not actually 47,000 that need to be vaccinated, but they're going to try and clean up that list a little bit. So it's a good place to start.
Mr. Chair, I, I know I signed up on the connector, but I have been vaccinated, so I'm assuming I'm part of that 47,000.
I would expect so.
Yeah.
I know the, I have seen a couple of the emails that people have received that have been on the connector, so.
Yeah, I haven't received an email.
Okay.
And I'm old.
Yeah, I, I don't know if there's, sometimes there's a way for them to reconcile lists with the NIC system or IMTRAC vaccine system. Some of the lists we have, they, what they call, they scrub it and clean it up, so that some of that may have already happened as well.
That's good. I didn't know if there was that connection.
Yep, they're trying to keep up with that.
Do we have a, a number of how many Blue Earth County residents have taken a shot?
Yep.
Seventeen.
Is that, is that, I mean, besides what you have given and different, you know, all the different pharmacies and IVs and...
So right now, that's at 17,133 Blue Earth County residents have received at least one vaccine. And then 10,645 have received two, and that's compilation of all of the providers.
There's all.
Pharmacy and us and clinics.
Well, that's not too bad.
So if a person doesn't make their appointment or can't make their appointment, is it relatively easy for them to cancel it or get ahold of someone to cancel it?
Yes, we have our phone number.
We recommend that.
Yes.
Would like people to do that.
That's right.
I, I actually got my shot in St. Peters, so would I fall under Nicklet County at that point?
No, you're still a Blue Earth County resident, so you would show up as vaccinated on our.
I just wasn't sure how they...
Just trying to mess with it, aren't you?
I got my shots. I got my shots in Minneapolis, so I don't know.
He's really trying to mess with it. Does, how, Mr. Chair, Johnson &amp; Johnson, the shot, or the serum is here, it's like Thrifty Drug, is it just a couple places that have it?
There's been some Johnson &amp; Johnson that has come into the area. Local public health has not received any of that as of yet. But I know our health systems and some of the pharmacies have had.
I know Sam's Club had it too. Just a one-shot deal on this kind of thing.
Okay. Other questions for Kelly, or comments?
Just a comment. You guys are doing great work, so thank you.
It's an amazing team I work with.
Really proud of what you guys do. It's quicker to go, it's swifter to go through the county. It's, works good.
Pardon?
Swifter. It takes less time to go through the county.
Yeah, I would just add too, I heard great comments over the weekend about the MRCI facility and how it was set up and everything else. The only one concern I heard is the sidewalk with the muddy wasn't widened up for two walkers to meet up.
With the snow that was there, that may be true. So now the snow is gone, so.
And I would, I would echo the same comments. I've been asking people, first of all, did you get sick from the first shot, second shot? Get that information. And then what their experience has been through any one of the clinics that we've had here in Blue Earth County, and all of them have been positive. Everybody has said it's been a very simple process. They were on time. They were in and out when they were supposed to be. The only one, even secondhand, was little problems with some parking. But other than that, the experience has been very well for everyone that I've talked to, so.
Wonderful. And we are fully transitioned to MRCI now, so that is our first-dose and second-dose clinics are all in one location, which
Perfect.
makes it just a little bit easier.
Are we, are we down to like 50-year-olds now, or we, or is it anybody right now?
Not, it's not anybody quite yet. So there are still priority populations. We've been focusing on the food processing and manufacturing areas, and then grocery, retail, retail service, so like restaurants and bars. There are age groups that are opened up, certain health conditions that are opened up, but you have to have a certain health condition to be vaccinated within those priority groups. But there's a lot more priority groups than there was even a couple of weeks ago, so that's exciting.
I was talking to a commissioner from Stearns County the other day, and they have so many processing plants, and I didn't realize that in Stearns County. And then, you know, you've got three counties coming into one city with St. Cloud, so it's pretty complex.
It, it is. We, we received a list from the state. We had around 22 processing plants.
Really?
Some very large, you know, ADM or CHS, and some small are like meat lockers, and some of our smaller towns were included on that. So more than I probably would have just come up with off the top of my head.
I wouldn't have guessed that.
Yeah.
All right. Other comments for Kelly?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly, for that report. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thanks. Thank you, Phil.
Thank your team.
Thank you.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Yes, pass it along, please. On to Public Works. Morning, Ryan.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning, Ryan.
Hi, Ryan.
Thank you for giving me some time this morning outside of my normal board meeting, but we had a handful of pretty critical agreements that require approval before we take things out to bid. So the first action item in your packet is consideration of the County State Highway 27 Eagle Lake Cooperative Construction Agreement for State Aid Project 007-627-015. This is an agreement between the City of Eagle Lake and Blue Earth County detailing their responsibilities for not only construction project, future maintenance, et cetera. And it also includes at the end of the agreement, a preliminary Schedule I based off the engineer's estimated prices, where we're showing a total encumbered amount for county cost participation of 1.508 million and a total encumbered amount of city cost participation of 1.894 million. That does include 10% contingencies as well as 10% engineering and administration costs. So I would request approval of that agreement.
Okay. Motion to accept the...
Move approval.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? We've had actually discussion about almost all of, all of these items on this agenda, so it'd be pretty straightforward. A lot of discussion about this item, though. Hearing none. Stephanie, would you roll call?
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landcammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye. Motion carries for the County Route 27 agreement.
All right, thank you. The next agreement included in your packet is the County State Highway 57, City of Mankato Cooperative Construction Agreement for State Aid Project 007-657-005. Again, very similar, nearly identical document to the City of Eagle Lake. This is a little bit more convoluted or complex because we do have MINDOT cost participation included into the Schedule I, again, based off of engineers' estimated prices. So the MINDOT total estimated share is 1.599 million. Blue Earth County estimated share, 705,000. And City of Mankato estimated share, $697,000.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a first and a second for the County Route 57 project. Any discussion? Again, might be discussions and comments and questions about this in the past. Hearing none.
Certainly is a intersection that I've heard nothing but people positive.
Yes.
About getting done. I mean, even those that, the folks that are being impacted, the businesses that are up in that area want to get that intersection completed because they, it's one of those that are truly needed in the area.
It's been talked about for a while, through Maple. Yeah, it's, one who travels, and a lot of us have, like, turn on to a riverfront there. Yeah, it's, it's time.
It's time.
All right, with that, Stephanie, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landkammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye. Motion carries for the County Route 57 Mankato agreement.
Great. The next action item is MINDOT Contract Number 1045770. This is an agreement between the State of Minnesota, the Department of Transportation, and the City of Mankato and Blue Earth County. This is a three-way agreement that took a lot of time and effort to get hammered out and to agreeable terms and attachments, et cetera. But this is a cooperative construction agreement, monumenting the agreement between the three agencies for those construction and maintenance responsibilities in the future. And again, we had a separate agreement that we just approved with Mankato to monument our cost sharing of our responsibilities. This is one to loop MINDOT into the equation. So it documents MINDOT's anticipated encumbrances. And very similar to documents we've seen in the past, the only differentiation is the fact that we do have a signatory spot for the City of Mankato. But it includes detail on the preliminary Schedule I, the estimated prices. So, and again, and then there's some documents at the end of the agreement that detail future maintenance responsibilities, right-of-way ownership, et cetera. And I won't go into length on those. So because they do also require a resolution, I would ask for first approval of the cooperative construction agreement and then approval of the resolution on action item number four.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Got a first and a second for CASA 57 Cooperative Construction Agreement. Any discussion? Stephanie, do the roll.
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landkammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye. Motion carries for the agreement.
Okay, and then for action item number four, I would request approval of the resolution included in the agreement for Blue Earth County to enter into this MINDOT Agreement Number 1045770 with the State of Minnesota Department of Transportation.
Landkammer moves approval.
Peepo, second.
Got a first and a second for the MINDOT Agreement. Any discussion? Stephanie, would you do the roll?
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landkammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye. Motion carries for the resolution with MINDOT.
Okay, thank you. And last but not least, a constructive, cooperative construction agreement between Blue Earth County and the City of Mankato for State Aid Project 007-682-009. This is for Victory Drive County State Highway 82 from CASA 60 at Stadium Road up to just south of Hoffman Road for reconstruction. So this would document the city's cost share of the trail cost as well, half of the trail cost as well as the intersection with Bolshurzac Drive and the stoplights that go in there. In this agreement, the county anticipated cost share with contingency and engineering costs included, 4.129 million. City of Mankato cost share, 542,000. I would request approval of this agreement as well.
I'll move approval of the.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Stephanie, would you do the roll call?
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landkammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye. Motion carries for the CASA 82 Mankato Cooperative Agreement.
All right, fantastic. Well, we've got quite a few bids to open in the next week and a half, and it's going to be an exciting board meeting. I'll be bringing three large contracts to you as well as three of our larger maintenance contracts, so.
These are all very good projects, so it's exciting to see them be going.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
You too, Ryan.
All right, let's take a break until about 10:20.
Perfect.
Commercial break.
Commercial break?
We shouldn't have a commercial.
Good.
Welcome back, everyone. We will continue with our board meeting here at LeWorth County. Looks like we're down to administrative services. Bob, go ahead.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes.
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
Got a first and a second for the minutes. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Stephanie, you do the roll.
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landcamer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stuenberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye. Motion carries for the minutes.
Next are bills for the three weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
You have a second for the bills?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Okay, hearing none. Stephanie, you do the roll.
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landcamer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stuenberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye. Motion carries for the bills.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 12 in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. And a long list for you, information. Items this morning, starting with the employment of a couple of children's mental health case managers in our children's mental health area. Those are two positions that were part of the two positions authorized with the 21 budget. We did receive a resignation of a property environmental resources specialist. We initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also received the resignation of a correctional officer, a part-time jailer in the jail. So we initiated recruitment to refill that position.
A resignation. Apparently my mic is failing, sorry. Resignation of a licensed center specialist. And so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also received a resignation of an assessment specialist in our property environmental resources department. Another resignation of a legal assistant in the county attorney's office. And so in addition to that, a retirement of a librarian. And we've initiated recruitment to refill a clerical specialist position in the sheriff's office. That was a position that you would have seen on a prior report. Items number M and N are revisions of retirement and resignation dates of a couple of employees that will be leaving or have left our employment. So just some adjustments there. And then item O is a voluntary demotion of an environmental services supervisor to a senior land use planner position. And the last two items are reclassifications of a couple of clerical specialists in our property and environmental resources department. Again, that was part of our discussion during the 2021 budget development process. Be happy to answer any questions the board has on any of the human resources items.
Any questions or comments? Lot of stuff going on.
Yeah.
Okay, hearing none. We'll move on, Bob.
All right, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 13 in your packet is then memo regarding 3-2 liquor licenses. We've received applications from two businesses to renew their 3-2 liquor licenses. The Cadel Cycle Club is requesting an on-sale license, and the Prairie Box Lune is requesting an on and off-sale license. The county attorney and sheriff have both reviewed these requests, and so we're recommending approval.
That moves.
Thank you, Kevin. Do I have a second?
Peepo's second.
Got a first and a second for the alcohol license. Any discussion? Hearing none. Stephanie, you recall the roll.
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landcamer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stuenberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye. Motion carries for the 3-2 liquor licenses.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 14 in your packet is memo regarding roofing bids that we received for the library. We did receive bids from five contractors. The low bid is Schwickert's at $724,480. After reviewing the bids, we are recommending the low bid for Schwickert's. This is a 40-year roof, as I understand it. It is a little different roof than we've done in some other projects, but it does address some of the drainage issues that we've seen there. And the facilities maintenance director, Tim, is here to answer any kind of specific questions the board might have. But I certainly wanted the board to be aware that this is a little different roof than we've done in the past, but it has been highly recommended, and it is a little more expensive than what we budgeted. I will tell you that we had $450,000 budgeted for this item, so we will have to do some moving around in our capital budget to make up the difference.
Stuenberg moves approve.
Peepo was second.
Got a first and a second for the roof at the library for Schwickert's for $724,480. We have talked about this in the past several times, so does anybody have any specific questions for Tim?
It is a concern that we have a quarter million dollars between the top and the bottom spot.
Yeah.
It makes some sense that Schwickert's is right here in town, so they don't have to do any moving. They don't have to come into town and set up and stuff like that, and they don't have to hire people from outside. But I guess I see that big of a spread. I'm concerned. It's only because I know Schwickert's very well, and I know how good of a company they are. I'm not concerned about their bid. It's just that I'm wondering why, you know, the other companies cost so much.
I know a couple of the contractors said they are real busy this spring, but they would bid. So I'm thinking that is part of it, but.
It's funny, you know.
They can't hear you. That's why it'd be harder ones.
Just to answer your question there, Vance, a couple of the contractors stated they were busy for this spring already. They had a lot of projects already on their books, but they'd be more than willing to bid it. And, you know, if they got it, granted, they'd fit it in, but the first bid we opened was that 1.1 mil. The shock look on my face right away was like, they better drop from there.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. What's the difference in the roof?
On the roofs?
Yeah.
Normally, what the roofs that we've done in the past are a single ply, kind of a 60-mil roof. This is a multi-ply roof, and so we're adding, you know, roughly three layers to it. It's kind of a two-ply, but then you do a kind of an asphalt in there as well to keep them plies together. So a lot more tensibility strength into the roof, and so far we get the longer longevity of it as well. Instead of a 15-, 20-year roof, we're looking at close to 40. And then with, you know, the inspections that we do as well, you know, we're looking at hopefully a 50-year roof. So we shouldn't have to worry about it at any time, so.
I was just curious.
Yep. This is the first time we've done this type of roof, but like I say, really, the single ply, if you get a puncture in that single ply, you get water penetrating. So with this multi-layered roof, we'll have a lot better coverage for insulation value as well, so.
Mr. Chair, there's anything on top of those ply, just the?
No, no, it's just, it'll be the kind of, it's, I don't want to call it a kind of a loose gravel, but it is a little light gravel mixture that's on the asphalt that sticks there.
And that's on the top, yeah.
Yep.
I thought, figured something besides asphalt.
Correct, yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Other questions for Tim? Okay, hearing none. I got a motion and a second. Stephanie, you want to roll call?
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landcamer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stuenberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye. Motion carries for the Schwickert's bid for the library. Thank you, Tim.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the next item, item number 15 in your packet is Guidelines for Requested Resolutions and Proclamations. You'll recall that we discussed this particular document at the last work session, and basically is a statement from the county board directing staff on how to deal with requests for proclamations or resolutions that maybe don't have direct bearing on county operations. So this is just a statement being made by the county board that information being brought forward to these meetings will be limited to those things that have a direct bearing on county activities or issues that are of interest to the county board in terms of lobbying our state and federal partners. And so it really starts to build some parameters around items that are brought to the county board to make sure that we stay kind of in our lane, so to speak, on issues that are important to county business. And so bringing it here today for board consideration and action, if preferred.
Thank you, Bob.
Move approval.
Second. Got a first and a second for the resolution. Any discussion? Again, this was discussed at a work session a week or so ago at length. There's no other comments, I'll step in and do the roll.
Sure. I just want to say that I'm proud of this board that we're doing this. I mean, I've said for years that we are not a political body. We work for the county. We work for the people in the county. We're not on the right. We're not on the left. We are, you know, we don't do that. We don't. And we get our rules from the state of Minnesota as to how we're supposed to operate. And there's so many things that certain people want to get us to say to try to change the political agenda for the state of Minnesota, and it's just not something that we do. So I'm really proud that we're bringing this up. I know other counties across the state have done this, and it's something that I wish more would.
Thank you, Vance. I will only make a slight, you're right, but I don't know if, I think we're all kind of political bodies because we're elected, but I know what you're saying, and I'm curtly with, I'm just giving you a hard time.
You wouldn't do that to me.
Being a political scientist, you know.
Mr. Chair.
Exactly, it rings true with what you say, though.
Under resolutions, and I really like this, I want to, I agree with all of you that this is really important because we are nonpartisan, and we're not going to get into the partisan piece.
That's the word.
Yep. But under the resolutions for the county board, it says approval of commissioners' salaries. Isn't it all electeds?
It would be, yes.
That was the only thing that kind of bounced out at me, so I thought I'd ask the question.
So we want that listed in there, you think, or?
Elected officials.
Does that make sense, Bob?
Or doesn't it? I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, it can certainly be county-elected officials.
Oh, exactly. Things we have, well, I don't know how much control we have sometimes, but.
Oversight over.
Do we approve all elected officials now, don't we?
Yeah, it just doesn't say it in here. Yeah.
Yeah. So you want us to make that adjustment, or we want to make an amendment?
I think an adjustment's fine.
Okay.
When you're talking all elected officials, you're also talking county attorney.
And sheriff.
And sheriff. And I'm not sure if we can make a ruling on what the county attorney and sheriff.
We oversee their budget.
Do we post them, do we post them now? What's our policy right now?
You set the salary of the attorney and the sheriff.
Yeah, we do.
But we don't set what they can say. We don't set how they can run their operations. That's not our, that's not, that's not a part of the county board. We can't, I, I mean, I am completely, obviously, you know, I'm completely for this, but when you say all elected officials, that we're talking the county attorney and the sheriff, and I have a real problem coming out as a county board member telling them what they can or cannot say.
This says approval of commissioners' salaries. And what I'm saying is of elected, county-elected officials, because we do do that now.
Okay.
Is that our policy now, I think?
Yes.
Every year, don't we?
Yes, they're included in that memo that we do annually at the end of the year to set the next year's salaries.
Just don't say it in here. Kevin?
I guess that answers my question. My question was, do we approve that through resolution or through the budget process?
Through a resolution.
So what are the wishes of the board? Do you want to actually have an amendment to this, or do you think just by changing that?
I would, I would accept that.
Yeah, I think it's just clarification.
Okay, if everybody's comfortable with the clarification, we'll move forward with the vote on the resolution. Okay, any other discussion? We will ask for a roll call in on the resolution, Guidelines proclamation.
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landcamer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stuenberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 17 in your packet, I'm sorry, 16 in your packet, is Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment Appointments. We currently have two vacancies on the Planning Commission and one vacancy on the Board of Adjustment. We have a number of individuals who responded to some recruitment efforts, and staff have reviewed those applicants and are recommending Taryn Sertie and Daniel Roberts to fill those vacancies on the Planning Commission. They're also recommending that Ms. Sertie be placed on the Board of Adjustment to fill that vacancy. Both of those individuals reside in Commissioner District Four, and we would have their appointments effective April 8th. That would give us a little time to give them some orientation, give them some training before they actually join those various committees. So bringing that recommendation forward today for the board's consideration.
Pap moves.
Got a second?
Landcamer seconds.
Got a first and a second for the two appointments to fill in boards. Any discussion? Hearing none. Stephanie, you do the roll.
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landcamer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stuenberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye. Motion carries for the Planning Commission members and Board of Adjustment. Fourth quarter 2020 donations.
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, bringing this forward for your information and acceptance. You'll see that monetary donations in the fourth quarter were $10,912.99, with about half of it going to the library and the other half going to the sheriff's office for some equipment. We also did receive in-kind donations for the library totaling a little over $1,000. And so, again, bringing that forward for acceptance by the county board.
I think our motion to accept the donations.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Stephanie, you recall the roll, please.
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Peepo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landcamer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stuenberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye. Motion carries for the donations. Thank you.
Then lastly, item number 18 in your packet is the financial status report for February 28th of this year. Our total revenue sit at $11,876,000 against expenses of $15,850,000. Couple of items to just draw your attention to. The transportation sales tax. You'll see that we're almost on the exact pace we were for 2020. It's two months in. It's pre-COVID for 2020, but we actually did finish out the year in a strong position even with the pandemic out there. On the flip side, the interest on investments. Kind of the investment world is upside down right now, and so we're seeing some negative trends in our investments at the current moment. Otherwise, you know, the overall spending is pretty much on pace with where we would expect it to be. Obviously, we are in that period where our revenues are not going to be as strong as our expenditures in those first couple of months of the year. On the enterprise fund, you'll see our total revenues there, $416,000 against expenditures of $389,000. Pretty much on pace. Again, the big thing here that impacts this budget are those land improvements and machinery and equipment purchases. And so from an operations standpoint, you know, it's in a very positive position at this point. The second page shows our cash and investment balances. Total county funds sit at $112 million. Our six-month operating needs is $55 million, so our available funds, which is kind of the key number to compare to that, operating needs sits at $52.4 million. So very healthy position at this point, and everything seems to be tracking the way we would expect it to. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have on the financial status report.
Any questions on the financials? Very strong. Thank you for that report, Bob. Well, that brings me to the end of my agenda. Is there anything else to add, Bob, before we move on to committee reports?
That's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. At this time, we move on to the commissioner reports, and Mark, I'm going to start with you today.
Always seem like you always do.
Haven't yet this year. I'm keeping track, so.
Oh, really? March 2nd, joint drainage ditch meeting, joint with the Watten Run. And March 3rd, we had department heads, and March 4th, Kip and I, we had RCF. Some changes going on there. And then March 9th, we had the county board work session, and that was a retreat with Roger there. That was a good thing to have. March 10th was Rita Staffing, Rita, meeting we had regarding that. And let's see, I had MICA board meeting in two after that. It was on March 6th, let's see, March 10th, too, yeah. And then March 16th, we had a county board, that was a real county board work session. And March 18th, we had Maple, wait, I mean, not Maple, Mankato Affordable Housing. That's kind of a group of people in the Mankato area that somehow got involved with dealing all aspects of housing in Mankato. And that was also includes a Southwest Housing Partnership, too. They're involved, they're dealing with properties up there by Good Council. And I did catch a couple sessions a little bit with the NACO conference, but that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mark. Kevin?
Since our March 2nd board meeting, from a professional development side, we've concluded our fourth session of AMC new commissioner training, as well spent a morning at the Justice Center for orientation. Want to thank county attorney, as well as the sheriff's department for a lot of great information and orientation there. Participated with Commissioner Brunder at our first extension committee meeting, as well as SWCD monthly meeting. Attended the Rural Minnesota Energy Board. Public hearing on ditch 48's been brought up, as well as a JD 17 landowner meeting. Attended the Greater Blue Earth River Basin Authority Policy Board meeting, and met with staff and others concerning the Lasseur River One watershed one plan. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Vance?
All right. Well, we'll go back to the second, and that was our board meeting. On the third, there was a coffee with AMC with the president. I attended that. And then the department head meeting that noon. On the fourth, I had a towards zero death cell central steering committee meeting. On the eighth, I had a detox board meeting, and there was also a NACO legislative conference meeting. There was on the, let's see, the ninth, we had our planning session for the board. That was really great. That was really a great thing. On the 10th, a Rural Action Caucus business meeting. meeting. There was on the, let's see, the ninth, we had our planning session for the board. That was really great, that was really a great thing. On the 10th, Rural Action Caucus business meeting. On the 11th, I went down to the old law enforcement center, what do they call that now? They don't call it the law enforcement center.
Public Safety Center.
Public Safety Center. Shows how old I am, I guess. And Jeff Werschel put on a program on drugs to the youth community group, and pretty eye-opening, even for an old cop like myself, pretty eye-opening as to what's going on in the community with meth and different issues. Let me see here. And then, let's see, on the 15th, there was an AMC coffee with Sue Abder-Holden from NAMI that I attended. That was interesting, of course, myself with two children with special needs, and that's what NAMI does, takes care of, is folks with special needs, mental health issues. And then that same day, I had a Zoom meeting with Emily Murray from AMC, Chris Byrd from Benton County, engineer, and Ryan, and we spoke on, well, we had a meeting later on with Representative, I have to get to that. On the 8th, 16th, they had a work session, that was good. On the 17th, I did a GMG leadership talk up at MSU, followed our administrator. So that was, it's always interesting, and it was, they wanted to talk about running for and holding a local office, and, you know, that was always interesting. On the 18th, I had a TDS board meeting, and then I also had an interview with Laura Peterson from Living Earth, in reference to the Community Farm. The 19th, we had an AMC board of directors meeting. And let me see here, I guess that comes up to today. And this afternoon, I have another Zoom meeting with the Community Farm at 5:00, and we've already have three people that have applied for the manager's position out there. So that's where we're going to be talking a lot about what's happening. Yesterday, I did go out to the Community Farm area. It looks like we're all set, all we need to do is dry out and then till the place up, and I think it's going to be one of the nicer, nicer ones that we've had over the last 10 years, and kind of excited to see how that's going to go. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vance. Clean.
On the third, department heads was mentioned, had a meeting with Medalia Crowdicity, it's all about a platform for public access, additional public access to comment, making it much easier and getting a broader spectrum. On lots of NACO legislative conferences throughout the last few weeks, they've had some really good sessions. I also sat in on Ag and Rural Affairs, and then was part of the conversation on the COVID relief bill. I think I've been on about three of those, you know what the impacts are. Treasury is in charge of that, and so they're trying to figure out what the rules and regulations are. We're hoping it won't change every other week like it did last time. Planning session, finance and intergovernmental affairs, talking about elections, Senate File 1 and House File 1 are part of that, so I'm on the subcommittee on elections. Rural Action Caucus, we had the Region 9 Executive Board meeting, where we passed a resolution to ask OMB to delay anything on the MSA, and it did pass, so that's a really good thing, and we encouraged people to submit comments. On the 11th, Kip and I had Intergov, MSA was part of that, and some of the road projects, so they've submitted comments. And then on the 12th, I had South Central Clean Energy, and they had someone from Sweden talking about how they're trying to become energy independent, sustainability and that type of stuff. There's still challenges with that, for them even, and they're farther ahead than we are. 16th work session, and I had a meeting with the Stearns County Commissioner on just the COVID relief stuff. On the 18th, the White House call with NACO, every two weeks, the White House has a call with NACO members just to talk about what's going on in Intergov and what's going on with the White House. The 19th, I had the AMC board meeting in the morning, and in the afternoon, I had the NACO board meeting. AMC, they're hoping to do in-person June meetings. We'll see what happens, and I'm, and our representative for District 7 wasn't on, so there was discussion about, is there a space big enough where you can socially distance? Is virtual an option? It might not be, depending on where your space is. Just some of those things are going to work, try to work through and see if that makes sense. I can't think of the right word right now, but NACO or AMC did, what's when you go to the, somebody goes to the courts and disagrees with what the court's determined? Can't think of the right word.
Appeal?
No, it's not an appeal, it's supporting...
Amicus brief.
Amicus brief, thank you, thank you. An amicus brief. Turns out there was a sheriff who was sexually harassing one of their, significantly, one of their employees, and that actually does not fall under his duties, just so everybody knows that. Anyway, little humor there, okay? And now they're saying that the county's got to pay. He's an elected official, and he pled guilty and resigned, so, I mean, but they're trying to come after the counties, no one, we're extremely concerned about that, what precedent that raises. And the NACO board meeting's going to be the 9th through the 12th of July, they changed the date. Kevin has new commissioner's school, so that might be changed, too. And they're looking at a hybrid, they're going to do it in Prince George's County, which is right outside of DC, and they're still trying to figure out if it's even possible. You know, social distancing, all that stuff, how many people can you have? So they're working with the Public Health Department in Prince George's County and the hotel, which is a Gaylord, which is large. More to come on that, I just thought I'd give you the new dates. And this morning, I had the airport commission, and that's where I heard that wood, steel, and is just going up through the roof, 40% in some places. They're doing some moving, they're reconstructing some of the runway, so they'll be moving things around, and a lot of discussion about the air traffic control tower, and asked us for a letter of support, which I think makes sense. So that's kind of where that is. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Clean. Other than the things that have already been mentioned, the work sessions, the other items that we already had joint meetings on, I did have planning zoning, which we already all seen this morning, extension, which, congratulations to Kevin, he was at his first meeting and got elected vice chair, and it was even before...
All right.
I got into the call a little late, and I got chairman back again, so, but Kevin was doing a fine job running the meeting, and then he had to cut out just a short, we finished just a few minutes after you left, but it was a very good report, very active meeting, so that was good to be part of that. Myself, statewide emergency communication board, the legislative committee has been meeting regularly, we're talking about the 403B statute, and then a lot of discussion about the 911 money. They're paying off a bond this year of the towers that they built, so they can drop down the 91 fees, and we had a little bit of this discussion at MICA also, because they want to leave the fee up. And so the discussion is, well, do we leave the fee up? We put that fee on to pay off this bond? There's other needs. Everybody thinks that's a great idea, but when you put on a fee to pay off a bond, there's a good part of people that think that that's what that's for, and how you're going to get credibility if you want to add a fee to pay off another bond later, so just a lot of discussion about that. At this point, even if they do drop the fee, there will be more money for the PSAs, for dispatchers, which is very encouraging for the counties, and working forward in that. But they are having some discussion about trying to keep a little bit more of that fee in there and help us out a little more. South Central workforce, we had a good update, Diane is going to be resigning or retiring, I guess, we ran into her the other day, but she's been running that organization since I've been on, I think I've been on that committee since I got on the board 19 years ago. She was with the organization, but I do remember Sandy was the chief executive officer for a few months or a year or so when I got on, so I've worked with Diane for the whole thing. So we wished her the best in her retirement, and she's having a little drive-by thing, I'm not sure, on April 15th, but Heather and Sarah will be coming up through the ranks, and they've both been in the system for a while, and they'll do a great job with that organization. Got our MVAC meeting, a lot of stuff going on there, we're still getting a lot of products out there with the housing stuff. Judd and his program have been getting a lot of money in the Blue Earth County or our nine-county area, but I would just like to mention that we have our Robert J. Wolf Award coming up, and that is someone that has showed exemplary volunteerism in the nine-county area. So every year, we do this award, and we try to get half a dozen names or so for somebody, so if anybody in this room has a thought of someone that's worked really hard volunteering and for the good of the county, of Blue Earth County, and then we try to get one or two names from each county, and then we'll work that through the board and pick out a name and give them the award in July. But it's always a very exciting award for people to get, and very well-publicized and a lot of fun. And that brings me up to today. So if there is nothing else for the good of the order, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Got a first from Mark, second?
Second.
Second from Clean. Any discussion? Stephanie, we do the roll.
Commissioner Pat?
Hi.
Commissioner Pebo?
Hi.
Commissioner Landkammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Strumberg?
Aye.
Chair Brunder?
Motion carries to adjourn. Thank you everyone for your time.
Thanks.